All right, welcome, everybody. This is a bright sunny Monday afternoon, November 17th, 2025. It is 1:02 PM. This is a regular workshop for the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. If I could have everybody stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
At this time, we'll take a brief moment of silence. If you all could, please keep in your thoughts our first responders, men and women in our military, as they serve and protect us near and abroad. All right, again, thank you, everybody, for being here. We have our full board with us today for today's workshop. We've got three items up for review today. First off, we're going to do a memorandum of agreement with the clerk of court for courthouse renovation discussion. Ms. Petito, can you take the lead on that?
I can certainly start. This item is in front of the board tonight at its evening workshop on consent. So prior to moving into that meeting, I thought it would be a good idea that we discuss the topic and provide the board and the public with transparency as it relates to this item. You may recall during the budget process, we had identified certain capital projects, things that we were still working on. Tonight on the agenda, you'll have one where we're going back and we're increasing the amount to the supervisor of elections for a similar type project. And then during the budget process, this item had been identified, submitted towards the middle to end of the budget. So we thought that we would use the opportunity when we do cash carry forward to bring it forward. It follows a similar pattern to other work that we've done in other constitutional office area to improve the efficiency workflow and be able to provide room for expansion of services. So this particular item, naturally, we own the facility. So the constitutionals can't do the work within their areas unless it meets with board approval. So the easiest way for us to handle this particular request would be to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the clerk of court. And then he will basically oversee the necessary construction project of the space. He will work in unison with our general services department to keep them abreast, and they'll be involved. But the primary person that's going to be the point of contact will be the clerk of court. So basically, in a nutshell, that's what this is. And I know our clerk is here to address any concerns or questions that you all may have.
Mr. Tom Bexley. Hello, okay. Good afternoon, Tom Bexley, clerk and comptroller. I would take a page from Gail Wadsworth's handbook, what she said. So the bottom line is, I think Ms. Petito covered everything. We'd been contemplating expanding one part of our office. Actually, we've been doing a few items here and there with the blessing and the hard work of the Board of County Commissioners. This particular renovation is to our central receiving department. That is a part of our office. It's on the first floor. It is responsible for receiving all of the money that comes into our office as the clerk of court and the county recorder, as well as the money that we collect from you as comptroller, all of the revenue that comes into the office and all the many different ways. And we interact fairly extensively with multitudes of departments that bring us money on a daily basis, and that's another function of that space. When the courthouse was originally designed, that space was kind of an afterthought. It wasn't big enough. It wasn't well-designed. It's been kind of an encumbrance on the people that worked there for a very long time. We finally come to kind of wits' end, and the people down there said, Tom, we have to do something. So I came to Heidi, I don't know, maybe a year or two ago, and we just kind of started chatting about it. The sense of urgency got a little bit more heightened. And earlier this year, I came to her with an actual estimate from a general contractor in lieu of using the resources of the county due to the demand that's been placed on general services and some of the professionals there. So I presented her with that estimate, which I believe has been included in your materials today. And it's a fairly large renovation, as far as the clerk of court goes, but very necessary. And I think the consensus between us and Ms. Petito and her departments was that a general contractor relationship would be the best way to go. So that being said, this would expand our central receiving division, I think about 40%. It would allow for larger workspaces for us to service the public better and for our employees to have a much better workspace to live in. It's been useful for 17 years, and I believe this will take us another 20 years into the future before we have to do anything again. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Bexley?
Yeah, Tom, have you fully recovered from the sheriff moving out?
Oh, thank you so much for asking that question. I would say, my guys are going to strangle me, yes. There are a couple of little odds and ends that haven't been fully restored, but I'm not greedy. And we've received a lot of assistance from you and from Ms. Petito and her team. So we're in a very, very good place right now, and this would take us basically a long way into the future. I've got some ideas of some other things we want to do, much like all the departments and other constitutional officers, but this is the last biggie for a while. Thank you.
I don't know the terminals you use for your spaces, but is this at the very end of the hallway, the main room, when you go in?
No, that's the recording, the records division. That's where you probably spend a lot of your time signing documents. On your way there, on the left side, there's two glass double doors. Don't get a parking ticket. That's where you, I mean, a traffic ticket, that's where you've got to come pay it. It'll basically take that space and almost double it in space with an entrance and an exit, so people flow, the traffic flows better. We don't do nearly the traffic that the tax collector does, but I'd say we do about a third of it. And having a one-way-in, one-way-out space like we have now, it doesn't make sense. It's just going to be a much better situation for us and the public.
And the room is coming at the expense of what area?
There is a place that we lovingly refer to as the fishbowl. It used to be a place where the sheriff and/or the clerk would have a welcome desk for constituents and users that would come in and they'd be at the bus. Hadn't been used in a long time. Behind that is a vending area, which would be relocated, and that's it. So no useful space right now would be lost. It would be spaces that aren't being used very wisely.
I have a quick backup question on that. So where Andrea and all those ladies sit over there?
Yes, ma'am.
It's the vestibule before it, which the police used to sit in there?
Correct.
Where the guards were?
Knocking out a bunch of walls, putting in new sets of doors.
So you're just going to expand that, and you will have an indoor here and an outdoor there, one way or the other?
You got it, Commissioner.
Because it is a burden when they are filled up in there with people coming, going, where do I go? They always look lost in that room.
Very claustrophobic, too. I can tell you from being in there, it's, yeah.
And I know each server has this little area, and they always see them running around.
Would you like to come up here and present this? You're doing a better job than me.
But I'm saying, it's all about, no, I'm confirming. I'm confirming, I've spent time in there, and I've seen, you know, transitions.
You're absolutely right. It's claustrophobic, the workspace is just, it was poorly laid out. And I mean, I can't blame anybody else but Gail Wadsworth. She designed it. I'm just kidding.
That was high scale.
Yeah, she'll cut me for that. Now, it was one of those things that was an afterthought, and we've progressed a long way. And it's going to have that look and feel of the tax collector, where you come in and it's very open and happy, and the interaction between the clerks and the public is so much better.
Thank you, thank you, Tom.
All right, anybody else for Mr. Bexley?
I just had a question on the carpet, TBD, to be determined. Is that a committee decision on who picks the color of the carpet?
We have a standard.
I'll be on that committee if you'd like some help.
We've got a standardized color. I'm not sure why that's there. There's a, they use carpet squares in every place in the office, so you're going to go with pink or purple?
That's cute, okay.
Thanks.
I'm all set?
Thank you.
Good luck. I don't know if it's going to interfere with your operations or not, but construction is not a good thing.
It's going to be absolutely terrible. The plan is to take all of those folks, move them down into Dana, this division down at the very end. They're going to be crammed in there for about three or four months. And then we would love for y'all to come over and cut the ribbon, because this is not my space, this is yours. You're just allowing us to be there. So we will give you ample notice, and I would really like to put something up that acknowledges the group that actually authorized this, because it's very important to us.
So this, I don't see a timeline in the backup, but you're looking three to four months?
Yeah, they, you know, Commissioner, they say two weeks, no, I'm just kidding. When I hear six weeks, I automatically double that, just to be sure. The company that we've been working with, so far, they've been rock stars. So as soon as we can get your blessing to move forward on this, they've said they can get us on the schedule pretty quick. So we're looking forward to do that.
Perfect. It's going to modernize the facility quite a bit.
Oh, it's going to be incredible. I can't wait for y'all to come over and see it, yeah.
And you'll have a lost month due to the holidays, so.
Any other questions?
I think that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your consideration. Looking forward to it.
For being here.
Really appreciate you guys.
Yep.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up for public comment if anybody had any public comment on this item. All right, seeing them, we'll bring it back, and we'll move to the second item, which is a four-year review of our Flagler County impact fees. And I see Mr. Mengele coming forward. Afternoon, sir.
Afternoon. Adam Mengele, growth management director. Got a few slides, hopefully not dwell on these too much. You've got my report, you've also got the reference links that we provided. And so probably most important there were the impact fee tables. If you had a chance to look at those, the impact fee study that we had completed, and then also the comprehensive impact fee ordinance. And so quite a lot of background on this, but want to bring at least a few of the commissioners up to speed on this, and then for others, it's a refresher. These few slides here at the beginning, how did we get here? So we contracted with Tindal Oliver on October 7th, 2019, to update our impact fees. The fee amount on the study was right at $150,000. Contract sought an update to the two existing impact fees that we had, transportation and recreation, parks and recreation. Those two, if you remember, at the time, had been held in abeyance of a long term. They're still on the books, they just weren't being collected. And I think it was for some eight-to-10-year period until we completed a study to reinstate the collection of those fees. And then also in our contract, we wanted to look at some new fees that we were talking about implementing, fire rescue, EMS, law enforcement, public facility, library facilities, and public buildings. We had two workshops, that's important. You'll see here in a moment why that was needed for us to have those two workshops. We presented the board with the option to adopt the impact fees at the full rate or to reduce the impact fee rates. And then additionally, you could, the board was given the ability to adopt one, all, none. So there was kind of a full range of possibilities there. We were concerned at the time with a House bill, Senate bill that was running through the 2021 legislature when the study came back to us. And what we had to then demonstrate was the presence of extraordinary circumstances to adopt increases to impact fees above statutory limits. You'll see those here in a minute. You could do that, and that 2021 change to the Florida impact fee statute said you had to have two-thirds vote of the board, supermajority, four votes versus a typical majority at three. Impact fees for commercial uses, as part of the discussion the board had, were recognized as high, there was some discussion about potentially that hindering economic development. We provided that option then to reduce the commercial rates. Tindal Oliver's staff said that others had gone through and basically bought down the fee using another revenue source and then sales tax to backfill the impact fee fund for any commercial discount if you chose to do that. They were not in favor of reducing the impact fee itself. They wanted to keep the collections at the recommended level within the study, and just you find some other way to make that money up if you have it for economic development purposes. Staff reported that impact fee increases, new impact fees, would take effect 90 days from adoption, and that in part, that was to account for projects that were in the hopper already, those that we already had that were pending. I think statute, though, also has that 90-day period, but at least 90 days. And so that accounts for those where folks had planned, had financed, had then well enough into potentially a planning phase. Remember, the impact fees are paid at the time of the building permit issuance unless you make some other arrangements, and they are due no later than CO, but typically paid at the time of building permit. Didn't want anyone to be surprised with that, so that's why 90 days was in there. 21 impact fee, 2021 impact fee study was what was known as consumption-based methodology. And so the idea is that new growth is consuming your infrastructure, consuming your level of service. And so you're having a degradation in a level of service as new growth comes online. And so then, that's where you created this rational nexus, you've heard us talk about this before, where you have a linkage between new growth and then the payment of the impact fee to accommodate for its impacts. This works in tandem then with your capital improvements plan, your capital improvements element, has to be linked to projects that are accounting for that new growth that are happening across that five-year period. Then county administrator, I thought this was a good quote, I pulled it out, I liked it so much. He said that financial future countrywide was uncertain at this time, and runaway inflation could blow up projections very easily. He said that in 2021, when we were going through our workshops in May. Goal of adoption of impact fees is to maintain established level of service standards. Impact fees work best. There's high growth and limited alternative funding available. That eventual law then became Chapter 2021-63, the House bill and the Senate bill that were pending, and that did eventually amend that Florida Impact Fee Act. Those two workshops that we held were needed to establish whether or not the extraordinary circumstances existed at the time of the impact fee adoption. As I recall, and I think those who are here remember, we did not find that extraordinary circumstances existed. We did say that we were the fifth fastest-growing county. We had some other things that were in play, but we did not necessarily have that extraordinary circumstances, I think, as a determination. Impact fee funds had to be used for the new growth, you already mentioned that, not replacement or maintenance. It's always going to be your capacity improvements. Your concept there is that the impact fees can offset or free up general fund dollars were previously used for growth. And then your impact fee expenditures, remember, they're restricted while the general fund expenditures are not restricted. Our ordinance 2021-09 adopted December 6, 2021. The first motion to table at that particular hearing was till January 2022, and the second motion to approve did happen with that change. If somebody had a review hearing that they requested for some aspect of the impact fee assignment, that we had a 30-day notice, and then it was changed to 90 days, and that passed on a 4-1 vote, so that those impact fees then went into effect 90 days after that December 6, 2021, March roughly, I mean, March 15th, maybe, don't quote me. Ordinance provided for graduated increases in transportation and parks and recreation. If you remember, those were the two that we held in abeyance. And so those then increased annually at March 15th each year, and then until this year. So March 15th, 2025, those were on a very minor gradual increase. The new impact fees for law enforcement, fire rescue, EMS, and libraries were adopted at the requested rate in the study. Public buildings impact fee ended up not being adopted by the board. To make that adoption work, we had to make a determination, basically your findings at the board, that it was consistent with the Florida statutes, comprehensive plan, and the land development code. And then you mentioned, I mentioned that establishment of the rational nexus between the new development and its impacts, that's what the study did. It must be based on most recent and localized data. This pulls from what statute says when you're establishing the impact fee. You've got to have the most recent and localized data. And then a finding that the impact fees are necessary to achieve the established level of service for public infrastructure. And so the idea, again, consumption-based, you're chewing away at that level of service. Got to have the impact fee to be able to maintain your level of service. You're not going above, you're maintaining, just to accommodate that growth. As an example, I use this slide, and this has that difference in the transportation, parks, and recreation over the year for single-family detached, the one that we see most often for us here in unincorporated. As you can see, that difference, it was very minor, but it did go up incrementally over each of those four years. March 15th each year, those fees then increased. You can see the difference there. So from $3,092 to $3,333 for your single-family dwelling in total impact fees. That does not include educational facilities, that did not include that. We don't have control over that. That's something that is collected, but it's not part of our ordinance. And then this graphic, what was what was based, what I added here was the same math, but then I added the calculated, what had been recommended in the study. And you can see here the difference. Law enforcement, fire rescue, emergency medical services, library, all stayed the same. You see the difference there, transportation was actually recommended to be 47% higher, and parks and recreation was actually recommended to be 138% higher. So the difference there, both those in total then was about 40% difference, but $4,659 versus $3,333 for single-family detached. And then, again, realizing that behind this math, transportation would have had an entire table of uses, residential and non-residential uses, that would have had a different amount that would have applied there. It would not have been, not a state for the record, it would not have been a percentage difference where you could see commercial, if we were doing the BJ's, it would not have been a 47% difference, there would have been a different study dollar value recommended in there. It's not going to be, this is for single-family. If I took a different scenario, the numbers may be different. It could be less, it could be more.
But transportation is roads, right?
Transportation is roads, yes, ma'am. Then this, I added this slide kind of late in the next one, because I wanted to give you an idea of where we are and what we're talking about as far as this. And so that when we did this, we also entered into interlocal agreements with the municipalities. And so imagine here, and the reason why you see the blanks is because other jurisdictions collect their own with these. So transportation, for example, Benel collects its own transportation impact fee. Flagler Beach, Palm Coast, they have their own, I believe. I'm not sure about Flagler Beach now that I'm saying it, but they did not elect to enter into an interlocal with us for collection of our impact fee. That's what you see here is those that approved, those fees, again, I left schools out of this, I had it set up for it, but I didn't track that information telling. And you may remember, I went to Flagler Beach, presented to them the educational facilities, EMS, and library, and they did. EMS and library, and they did accept educational facilities and EMS, but rejected library because they had their own library is what they had said. And they, at that point, they just said they weren't interested in collecting our interlocal, our library impact fee through an interlocal, but you can see how that breaks down. And so each of these jurisdictions then, for the respective ILA, the respective fee type, are collecting that on behalf of the county, retaining administrative fee and then remitting the balance to the county. And so that then yields this, it's a little busy, but this is the total amount collected in each of the fiscal years for each of these respective years by fee type. And I did the total, and I don't know if that's truly a representation of what you have in that fund balance. We sat there, sat there and said, oh, we have 1.7 million in transportation right now. I don't want you to have that impression, that's merely the sum of those four to the left. And so that gives you an idea of what we had collected, what we had in there annually. I think we've had some expenditures, we also likely had some interests that's generated off of those, but each of those, each of those, excuse me, each of those then, my totals on that right hand side are the sum of the, of individual fiscal year collected balances on, on those years to the left. So I wanted to give you an idea of, of what we took in. And that's with the rates we have now. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry. So what you're saying, I just want to make sure, because your English was very, very fancy to me, the transportation, 2022s, 23s, 24s and 25s are the total of all four of those at the end where it says total?
1.7, yes ma'am, just the, just the sum of each.
So these first three columns could have already been spent, correct? Because it would be in those budgets?
That's right.
And the only thing we'd really probably be able to truly look at for this year would be 505 if, if that's, some of that's not even spent.
And when I wanted this more than anything else, because I think that what comes up is this idea, okay, so remember the ILAs, you know, we're not the only ones collecting some of these. And so if we go to transportation, you know, it's only really us, Beverly Beach and Marineland though. And so you can see the source of the funds. And so if you wanted to come back and ask me, I could tell you very quickly, this doesn't include Palm Coast transportation, they're collecting their own. This is what we've collected. And so that's what, I wanted you all to see this, you know, but law enforcement, law enforcement is common for all of us except for Benal, at least according to what I had here, and Flagler Beach, I'm sorry, they have their own police department so that, you know, we do benefit there from Palm Coast collecting the law enforcement impact fee. And, and we had discussed it in quite a bit of detail with them, where we were hoping that their collections on law enforcement could help to offset some of their annual contract negotiations that they have with the sheriff's office. That was the intent that we had. Library, you can see there that it's collected by everybody except for Flagler Beach. And so then you go there and you can see, you know, how our collections have worked with that. And so that, you wanted to get the idea that this isn't merely a reflection of unincorporated Flagler County population and Flagler County permitting.
Joint.
The rest of what I put in my report, my cover memo is all singular to us. But you can see there, the interlocal generates some, some other, other funding.
Thank you.
And so these next tables are all directly from the, from the staff report. And so what we're supposed to be looking at as part of the study is, you know, are there extenuating circum, extenuating circumstances? We certainly had the inflation rate go up. So we, we know that that's been a qualifier, that's on the cost side so that our monies that we're collecting don't go as far as they used to. Population, we've, we've got some increases, but they're, they're marginal. This county total and then unincorporated, you know, realizing transportation, we're affected by, by everybody, library, we're affected, EMS, we're affected by everybody. So you've got that countywide aspect to that. Parks and recreation, I think arguably, we're affected by the entire county population. But this is the Bieber source as of April 1st of each of these years. So this gets, this gets in the cover memo. Our permits issued just for us, just for unincorporated. And so you can see how our numbers track, 3,006 so far year to date in our, our most recent year, 263, single family residential. And so you can see our ups and downs that we have. We are very susceptible to market fluctuations, inflation affects us, definitely the prime interest rate affects us, all those things that typically affect the housing market. You know, you heard a lot of it about supply side and I've got a little bit about that also, about the producer price index, you know, and how some of that hopefully has finally shaken out. But you can see there how, you know, that's, that's had some fluctuations, it's been significant. And this next one I think was, was very telling steel mill lumber. So you had some very high initial prices and then that I think now is finally kind of moved through as there's, my take, there's been surpluses that have been generated and, and construction just isn't happening as quickly as it had. And so that it's trying to go back and adjust now because you've had that high supply, trying to meet the demand, trying to meet the higher price. And now that demand's fallen back, supply is, is higher on that end. And then this was from the home builders website, I wanted to make sure you saw that, I can't leave it out because you've heard about Palm Coast experience with raising their impact fees, wanted to make sure you knew that on our end, that we know that they've, they've done what they've done. And so this is what the home builders put out as, as a kind of a, a quick review of what they've recently then provided to the community. And then this kind of, I guess, says more than anything else, along with their website, their fair fees talks about the, the increase that is, is facing a single family dwelling in the city limits now with their most recently adopted impact fee. I tried to capture this, I don't think I did it as good as I should have, but this should be the bumpers that are within the impact fee act that you need to know of in order to, to do any kind of impact fee increase. So that first one, an increase to a current impact fee rate of not more than 25% of the current rate must be implemented in two equal annual increments, beginning with the date on which the fee, increased fee is adopted. An increase to a current impact fee rate which exceeds 25% but is not more than 50% of the current rate must be implemented in four equal installments, beginning with the date the increased fee is adopted. An impact fee increase may not exceed 50% of the current impact fee rate. An impact fee may not be increased more than once every four years. And then finally, an impact fee may not be increased retroactively for a period, a previous or current fiscal or calendar year. We're here not only because of the four year that's here, but our, our study also said, our, our ordinance said, we'll review this within four years. And so we're a little time sensitive, December 6, I think being that date when it was done before back in 2021, that's why we're here now. Then also because you had mentioned this, I think in May at the workshop, and so I mentioned that in the cover memo, you wanted to look at these. And then this one gets busier, but this is the one that says, okay, that slide I just told you, well, there are exceptions. Statute says you can exceed the phase in limits, but you've got to meet these criteria. Demonstrated need study, in excess of those that I just read, those, those three, those three are the C, B, four, B, C, D and E. You complete it within the 12 months before the adoption of the impact fee increase and will expressly demonstrate the extraordinary circumstances, that's the language of the statute, that necessitates the need to exceed the phase in limitations. Remember the two workshops, you've got to have the two publicly noticed workshops providing for the extraordinary circumstances. Impact fee increase, ordinance is provided by unanimous vote of the governing body. This one's unanimous when you're going for the phase in, above the phase in limits. All five of you have to agree unless somebody doesn't want to be here and then they're, maybe we can get by, anyway. An impact fee, I didn't suggest that. An impact fee increase approved under this paragraph must be implemented in at least two, but not more than four, equal annual increments, beginning with the date which the impact fee or, uh, increase ordinance is adopted. A local government may not increase the impact fee rate beyond the phase in limitations under this paragraph if we haven't increased the impact fee within the past five years. So we're, we're good there. Any year in which the local government is prohibited from increasing impact fee because the jurisdiction is in a hurricane disaster area is not included in the five year period. So with what I've presented to you, my intent was to show you kind of where we're at, I realize this is a nutshell. You know, there's a lot to take in with this. The study that we had completed back in 2021, I feel, I feel good about the validity of the study, about the consumption based model. Couple of things we talked about for your consideration, probably an obvious one, we have a library impact fee right now, we just got done building the Nexus Center. We, we used some of those monies for that, for that development. And so with that, maybe if you are considering something, maybe a library impact fee doesn't make any sense because I don't see us building another library. We may expand, we may end up doing an addition to Palm Coast, but that may not be something that you'd want to utilize those funds within the next 10 years. The other part to keep in mind, five year capital improvements plan and then the 10 year expenditure limit, we believe it's 10, I can't, I didn't look in the ordinance, I should have. But it's a, a 10 year limit within which you collect the fees, then you have to expend them. Probably heard us mention that before, it used to be eight, I think we made it 10. But that's, that's another thing that's out there is that consideration, if you collect it today, year one, you've got to expend it within that, that 10 year timeframe, that timeframe within which those fees then arguably are used for that growth. So maybe libraries doesn't make any sense, maybe public buildings make sense. So maybe you do want to go back and reconsider, that's not going to be a swap, an even swap. The, the study had its, its basis for the public buildings. And what I'll contend also is if you want to do something now, as far as increasing any of these impact fees or changing them, I believe you'd have to have a new study because the, I mentioned it quickly, impact fee act says it has to be based on the most recent relevant data. And so I think that would compel us to going back out, doing another study and then being able to then provide the justification for us, maybe not the extraordinary circumstances, maybe for those, those lesser phased in fees.
25.
But remember also, the other thing we talked about, and I haven't really kind of vetted that completely, Heidi and I did talk about it and, and you may recall who were on the board before, that when we did the phase in approach, the intent all along was that the calculated rate for transportation and parks and recreation would then apply at the end of that phase in. And so that's one of the things we talked about, I was wanting to go back and check the minutes, I didn't have a chance, but, and it wasn't reflected, let me correct that, it wasn't reflected in the minutes, I'm going to go back and reflect, check the video and audio to see what was said. But we, we talked about it and said there may have been some intent and we'll have to figure out how that would work if that's how the board would want to proceed to go into what now has been the end of the phase in. March 1, 2025 was the last of our phase in on transportation and parks and recreation. And so what then would happen potentially is arguably you'd go into the full calculated rate recommended into the study for years beyond. There may be a way to make that happen without having a new study, it was recommended in this study, we did not adopt that, we adopted the phase in, that would not change any of the other fees or any other fee rates. It would only be unique to transportation and recreation, parks and recreation. And we probably have to have some, some long conversations with the county attorney's office and with finance to make sure that even makes sense, but that may be a possibility. Those of you who remember when we did that, I think would probably be best to be able to tell us about how that actually worked and what the board intent was. With that, I'll close. Looking forward to your discussion, I'll try my best with any questions that you have. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, sir. Questions?
Yes, I, we have several buildings that are in process or in planning or in design. So let's take something that's in design right now, doesn't have any dirt cleared for it. Does that get a, does that get a fee? If we choose to, to pursue it now, that gets a fee? If it's paid for and we get a fee, where do we put that fee and what can it be going towards?
So if, like, if an example, I'll be real vague because if you've got something maybe that hasn't yet been encumbered for a hypothetical public building, then I think you're, you're good. And, and in some ways, let me make sure I fix this a little bit. If you have some bonded debt that's used for it and, and that, that construction is still to accommodate growth, it's not replacing like for like, it's, it's, it's got some growth component to it, the, our ordinance was very specific that we could also handle bonded debt, so long as.
Bonded debt is, in commercial is low.
Well, so it's just to, to pay, payback. I mean, if it's, if you're collecting the impact fee, you can still, you can use it for anything that is, I'd say a bona fide capacity improvement. As far as if it's a, a fire station right now, good thing, we are collecting fire rescue impact fees. And I think we wanted though, and we were very explicit with that, we wanted those ideally for apparatus, but.
For equipment.
For, for equipment versus, versus a station. But I, I think the way that's structured, you can, you can use it for a station also.
So let me take the example of the John Nett's community wing. They build that, if we were to build that right here for the whoever's community wing, would we be able to charge impact fees on that if we change the rule? And use it or we can't use it because it is a community building? That's, I, I don't understand the difference between community.
Maybe I'm not answering. We, we won't charge the impact fees against it, we would be able to use impact fees for its construction if, if we have, and to me, that would be one that would be directly public buildings. If you had the public buildings impact fee, it was in effect and you prove that that community wing is needed to accommodate, we're, we're too big for what, where we are now, we need that.
Okay.
Maybe the, a good example, we talked about it, bit of a sidebar, supervisor elections, I don't want to call them out, but I'm going to do it because I can. And so they've, they've outgrown their, their facility, they've, they've, and so now they need something more. And so the question is, do we add on or do we build anew? That would be one that, that I think would be a, a very quick.
And does parking include in that too?
It's.
Because if you can't facilitate it, then.
I think, I think safe to say the expense that's needed for, for the, for the totality of the capacity improvement would, would work, yes, if it's in public buildings. I think it's, it's, again, we'll be looking at county attorney's office to help us with the wordsmithing on that. You know, I think, I, I could see.
But a possibility, nothing's definite until.
Right.
It's been decided, okay. Thank you, I just wanted to get some clarity on it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, questions?
I, I just have a comment. You, we're all going to see this again under the affordable.
A-hack.
No, hold on a minute. Affordable housing, A-hack, sorry.
A-hack's better.
Yes, thank you. One of the areas that both the county and the city of Palm Coast needs to become more cognizant of is the statute that talks about evaluating the impact of any ordinance or any change and how it will directly impact the affordability. So something like, and this Palm Coast process came up. So I don't know that we need to get A-hack involved at this point, other than to announce at the next meeting that the county is thinking about this because they're going to want a hand in this decision. It's only advisory, but they, it's incumbent upon the county to include them in their advisory capacity before we take action on possibly increasing the cost of single family homes or whatever. So I don't know if it's time right now, it's just kind of a, don't forget about A-hack. This process took a long time in Palm Coast and it probably will take us a while, but we might want to notify A-hack that we are looking at this point. Do you agree, Adam?
I agree, but also, and I, I remiss, I don't have the full text of the ordinance in front of me, but our, a, a good thing we did with this, and I, I don't think we'll have to do a lot of reinventing on that part of the wheel. 2001 comprehensive impact fee ordinance, I think had some provisions for affordable housing. And so I don't want to say the direct waivers, we always had problems over the years on saying anything was waived, but, but look at that. I know, I know that we exempted county facilities from the payments of, of the impact fees, but I, I think there's some very specific language in there about affordable housing. Doesn't hurt to look at it again, but good thing is, is I, I think we feel, I, I could say with some good certainty, the, the ordinance itself, I think is, is built on a strong foundation.
It's, it's written into the affordable PUD.
Yes, there also.
Right, but it does affect regular single family, which would be outside of the PUD. Good point, Ms. Carney. Anybody else with questions? I've got a couple. So it sounded like you still had a couple of questions from legal and planning perspective. So will we hear something back or is there recommendations from staff and from legal on, on what you've reviewed where we could amend these? Other than you mentioned the potentially doing away with the library and shift. Other than you mentioned the potentially doing away with the library and shifting to public building. Right, the, the direct comparison of us in Palm Coast, you showed the one Palm Coast, but I, you know, what we have commercial-wise is the migration of projects from the county to the city. And I don't know how many more of those we'll get, but there's an incentive to permit through the county and go to the city by annex because our impact fees are lower. And I think there's room to narrow that gap, so that's not an incentive-based decision. We run into issues with municipalities where we're the, the maintainer of the road facility, but on both sides, we've got developments within the municipality. So I didn't know if our inter-locals needed to be redone, not necessarily the impact fees, but-
I could address that.
Sure.
And so something that we did talk about, and I'm not as familiar as I should be, but Volusia County, again, different charter, different arrangement. You know, they're a charter county. But they have a, a county thoroughfare road impact fee. And so something we talked about internally at staff level is maybe not, not a transportation impact fee, but actually be very specific, very pointed, and having maybe a lesser amount called a county thoroughfare road impact fee that would then open it up potentially to collection throughout the entire county. That all the, the inter-local then would be ripe, our opinion, for each of the municipalities to adopt that because the idea is, is that their growth impacts the county thoroughfare road system.
Right.
So be, I, I don't want to sugarcoat it. It's going to be less than what we're collecting now. Maybe we only collect our transportation for county projects, but then we'd have a county thoroughfare road impact fee. Lesser amount, but then would be something that we'd pursue inter-locals with the municipalities to be able to handle growth occurring in the cities but affecting our thoroughfare roads. We ran through those, probably still have East and West districts. You can think quickly, Old Kings, Colbert Lane, Roberts Road, John Anderson Highway. And then on the, on the west side, then, you know, 305 County Road 13, 302, 304, any of those that we are going to be facing some significant impacts on there. And so, and then the other part, one more final thought, others had headed towards something known as a mobility fee. I think that works in tandem if we're planning to have not just reliance on roads. We've talked about it for a while. We are still, best I know, also talking about fixed route. And so the idea is mobility kind of has more of that feel where it's not just roads only. And so maybe an adoption of a mobility fee instead of a transportation impact fee. Again, it may just be semantics. It may be, you know, not really much of a difference other than its name. But others in, in our area have adopted mobility impact fee. And when you do that, it's typically trying to gear yourself towards more of a transit-oriented type setup. And that may be something we'd be looking forward to within the next five or 10 years. And so something the foresight the board would have, maybe that works into your math.
And you talked about the new permits. You had a slide on the new building permits. For the county, where's that heat map? Where are the majority of those coming?
Kind of, it's, I think I'm confident in saying the DRIs are still the driver.
Plantation Bay?
Hunters Ridge. Yes.
There was a, I think it was, has been adopted in, recently in St. John's, but also Clay, which is an environmental impact fee.
Yes.
So that would need a study.
It would.
We can't piggyback those. But as far as revisiting the study, that would be an avenue. If we did the, if we got rid of the library and did the public service, that also would be needing a study? Or did we do enough in the old study?
We, we, we did it. We probably have some, some bones that are there, at least as far as the justification for it. But the, the, the short answer is the tables related to the growth and the, the facilities, the consumption side of, of the math would need to be redone to, to be able to be updated.
All right, so an argument-
The way I read it was if, to do anything, anything, we need another study.
Yes.
I think that's, that's what I read.
That's what I believe.
We could, you know, I, I agree with your thought process because I had the same one. But then I read it again, and I think we have to have a study to, to do anything.
Well, I, I think it sounds like we're going to need to come back and maybe with a little bit of research from staff on some of the issues that we pointed out. The costs, you know, what an updated fee would be or, and, because I do think, right, the transportation one is probably the, the most needed. And we've, we've seen some deficiencies from our, from the impact of, of growth on our county facilities, and, and we're just not able to keep up with that.
Andy, can I interrupt? We, we had the, I don't know if you've heard, the disadvantaged transportation, but they are doing a study right now. We're in the middle of a study right now.
Right.
For transportation.
That's the Cutter study.
Yes, yeah, I believe that's not-
Yes, Cutter.
Yeah, that's not for, that, different, but, but way-
It won't count.
Impact fees may be part of the discussion there. I think that there, there, there may be some advantage or could it be, at least be some, part of the Cutter study ought to be talking about demand, ought to be talking about your workforce and-
They're talking about, right. They're talking about workforce. They're talking about a lot of different things and even pedestrian. So, you know, or bike. They're, they're looking over everything over the next five or six months. So we should be good for that.
Good data there, I think.
Adam, not having access to the data, and it might be something that we can talk about later, but when, when the, when the report or the data came up with the suggestion, again, I don't have access to it. I didn't read it. In your, in your recollection, why is emergency medical services rated so much lower than library? I mean, is there a correlation between use of the service? What, what drives that number to be so much lower than a library?
If I'm remembering correctly, the, the qualifier, the factor there was the, was the facility. And so that EMS typically is co-locating with an existing station, even in one of the cities. And so that there, there's not a, a component there for a facility.
So it's mostly equipment?
Yes, ma'am. That's what I'm recalling.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything?
Yeah, I have a question. You were talking about new, different types of fees, like public buildings, general government impact fees and things like that. The mobility impact fee, have you heard of that one?
Yes.
Would that replace the transportation?
It would.
It would have to?
Yeah, yeah. Or at least in my experience it has. The, other jurisdictions before, and we talked about when we were doing this one in 2021, we wanted to call it mobility. And, and that the others around us had always had made that transition, my opinion, because they had that transit aspect, a fixed route. Because they were using the mobility fee then to add buses, add routes, add bus stops, add bus stations. And so that was part of, you know, anything, I think, safe to say, anything we could do in a public policy standpoint to reduce new road lane miles is preferred. And so that, that's where we were trying to head with that.
So the city of Daytona Beach has a mobility plan impact fee. And what they do is they identify where development's going in and what would be needed. Like, let's say if we said it was going in at 304 and that road needed to be widened and repaved, then they would make the, they would have a specific impact fee to that area that a developer would have to pay for that project. And that's how they're doing it down there. And they actually have like a 10-year work plan for certain areas and for, with their mobility. So it's really, they've got a map, so does Lake County, that like, I was, had looked at them last night. I was looking again today, where they actually have them districted, you know, and the development, developer would have to pay, you know, for that specific project. It looks complex. I mean, I don't know. But it doesn't, regardless, it looks like if we want to change anything, we have to go to a study.
You could. And because of it being facility-based and linked to your capital improvements plan.
Yeah.
You could adopt more than one. We have the two districts right now, East and West. And we've just, for the sake of, of, I think, easiness, we just did the same fee in both and then collect the fees and then, and then save them in those districts and spend them out of those districts. I think there's an argument where you could have a different fee for each of those, not transportation or mobility or whatever.
I saw that. It was like, there's different ones based on east, what, Lake County does that, based on what district. There's a different charge of an impact fee because of the work due in those areas.
That's exactly it. It's linked to the capital that's needed there. And then I, I'm not familiar, I, I could, I'll tell you kind of for the record that we have, we were required to do a proportionate share ordinance, bless you. And our proportionate share, what you're describing, sounds like that to me. And maybe Volusia found some way to meld the two together. But if we had a roadway, as the example, that already has a failing level of service, then we move into the proportionate share framework. And then you're, you're, you're calculating the developer's proportionate share. They get impact fee credits, but then you're, you're figuring that at the onset, and they're paying that at the onset or prior to CO, however you, however you work it out.
And if they're getting, if their project's approved in a different municipality, but they're using a county roadway for that develop, you can't collect into that. There's no inter-locals that can be done for that.
Correct.
Right.
If you want to, well, only from experience because there, you do have kind of a, we used to have two different collections in Volusia. So, and a lot of the area, the targeted area in Volusia is, was the LPGA corridor, which was our biggest problem in Volusia County. Because you had LPGAs, a county road, and then what you had was a collision course of development between City of Ormond Beach and Daytona Beach, all exploding development there. Yet all of that development was, was basically overflowing onto county roads. So we had kind of multi-party, oh my God, my, my age is going, I just blank. You just said what the agreement was.
Interlocal agreements?
Not in, no, no, not in a local agreement, sorry. We had interpart, we had multi-party proportional prop share agreements, which we drafted. I mean, one of the largest ones we drafted was the Buc-E's Prop Share Agreement, which I think I still have my template for it. In which when there was, Buc-E's entered into that agreement, both with the city of Daytona Beach as well as Volusia County in determining what was their, their share of the impacts. And then the, the agreements themselves, we would have in the agreements, this is your share of the payment to Volusia County, this is your share of the payment to City of Daytona Beach. So that would be the, you'd have basically two governments and a developer entering into that agreement. So that would, that would have to be ratified by two governments. But that's, if we were to have a, it's a situation like that, it's not an interlocal agreement because we're, it's, it's basically the developer at the time of having to come up with an agreement for impact fees is coming in and concurrent agreement with both the, the city and the county, and it's all laid out for them upfront.
But we would have to work that out with the municipality way beforehand, like with the joint planning group.
Yes, yeah. And I, I was going to say-
And have a come-to-agreement on that.
To me, I think that works in with that, that joint planning agreement. I think that works in with that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Next steps, what do you want? Do you want us to give you some ideas on when you come back or?
If, if I'm hearing you're right, I think that what I'm taking away, you do think that the impact fees need to be increased? So step one, that's what I wanted to get from you is if you're good with where we're at, status quo, we don't have to do anything. And then we're just waiting. Whenever we need to do an increase, we'll do a study. And so we can keep collecting just what you're seeing here, just what you saw on the tables. But if you don't want to do that anymore, if you, you want to change library to public buildings, if you want to increase some, we'll, we'll figure out what's going to happen with that. The way to do that would be to, to, to follow up with a study. We can get cost estimates on that. We can report back to you on that. We can also talk about, and I think we're still resigned one way or the other. I don't think it's even worth talking about the, the, the study amount here because now the conditions have changed. And so every four years, my read of statute says you've got to base it on the new data. And so you, you can't do any increase other than after a study's completed. So if my takeaway is, is I think you all are interested in coming back with a, a study and we can, we can pursue that, come back and report to you with options. If nothing else, again, our impact fees stay just like they are. This doesn't change anything for, for today, tomorrow, five years, 10 years from now. But we'll come back and, and report to you, maybe at another workshop about, about studies and tell you what cost is going to happen with that, what others are doing, give you some comparisons.
I just know the grade, the cost of a lane mile now is so much more, so different.
I, I think it's worth giving, I think, it's just me, I'm one of five. I think it's worth changing, doing a study and trying to be very forward-thinking about the growth that's coming into these areas and how much of it depends on county, roadways that we can't keep up in maintenance, and, and going ahead and looking at something where we say, hey, maybe there are districts, you know, maybe we do need City of Bonnell to step up now and we work on these together. Because it's clear that's their vision. We can't control it, but we are, you know, we have what will be failing infrastructure in these areas and we need to work ahead. We need to set future boards up so that there is a clear agreement there on, you know, impact fees collected to, for those particular roadways that we know about. I just, I feel like that's a necessity for any future. But I, it also looks complicated, so, you know.
Can that be done over in other cities too for the services as well, or just the roads?
It looks like it's just roads from what I can see.
I think it's easier with roads, but if there, if there is, I'll use EMS, I guess, as an example. If there's, if there's some factor that makes it where the cost is more expensive in Flagler Beach as opposed to Palm Coast, I think that's fair. I think you can set up multiple districts with multiple fee schedules. It is, it is consumption-based, and so it's going to be, you'll have to have that linkage then if it's growth within that geographic area that's happening that, that may, has, where you've got to maintain the, the level of service. So, you know, then that justifies the, the impact fee rate.
It's so same, same concept, right? That we were just talking about in roads. Could you take that concept and say, hey, you use our fire, you use our EMS, let's work an agreement for that as well, I wonder?
Good. And I, I think some of what we were hoping, you know, through the ILA, that, you know, that we already have for them collecting. You know, I think it's already kind of covered with that.
Kind of covered.
And I know, I know what you're having.
I just feel like with the, with the roads, I think that
It's different.
The only way to get ahead at this point, or to, to try to keep up with it is to try to work some sort of agreement upfront on what the vision looks like and, and how we're all going to pay for roads, like.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think what we need to do today is have a consensus that he needs to go find out what a study's going to cost and come back to us with that, get that started.
Which study?
Then we can discuss, when we see the results, then we can discuss all these. And I think they're all good ideas, especially the partitioning off of some of the bills that we, we get. But I, I think we, we should give him the consensus that we want him to do a study or get, find out what that's going to cost to do a study and come back to us as soon as he can with that.
Well, speaking to the study, Commissioner Hanson, is that a, a yes on that?
Yes, I'd like to see a study, that what it's going to cost to do a study.
Commissioner Bankton?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson, yes. All right, me too, so.
Thank you.
Let's, and just final comments. I do think, right, there's, looking forward to a new analysis because of the needs we have, too, for Parks and Rec with a lot of our new facilities that are in the plans. Transportation's way behind and would like to add an environmental analysis anyway so that we can continue to preserve and pay for a lot of the preservation that's, that's in front of us, so.
We could do that. We could do that.
All right. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You want to open up for public comment or?
We'll go to public comment for the impact fees.
We have public's comment.
Raymond Roy of Pandershill, all in favor for the impact fees. The only question I have for Adam is, and maybe Adam can answer it first today, with the, the fees going to the, is it going to the homeowner immediately as they pull the permits for the home? Is it going to be due, like you mentioned earlier, at the CO? Or can it be due for the homeowner at the time of closing? Because there's situations going on around the country right now where these impacts, where the homeowners are paying it upfront. And with today's economy and, and construction building right now, some of these developments are closing shop. So these homeowners got thousands of dollars of these fees, and it could be going towards another home so they can find a place to live. So just keep that in mind because we are going into a building situation where, you know, construction's slowing down a little bit. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, wait. Chief?
Good afternoon. Mark Sturridge, Flagler County Sheriff's Office. I just want to take a moment to say certainly we are definitely in favor in a good, strong look at the impact fees. As you can saw from his, Adam's presentation, Parks and Rec has a single-family- As you can saw from his, Adam's presentation, Parks and Rec is a single-family, realizing that it's not a business, but a single-family, we're going apples to apples. Impact fees for Parks and Rec, three oh four, fire, seven thirty-eight, library, two sixty-eight, EMS, sixty-two dollars. And sheriff's office or sheriff's law enforcement facilities is two eighteen. So, we felt like the, there was probably some issues regarding that. And when they did the initial study in twenty-one, the consultant came and just got some basic statistics and we didn't have any additional input. So, certainly with the growth that we're going to experience on the island side, you know, we'll need a, a facility there in the hammock with such. And all these things are already on Ms. Petito's radar with the growth. The growth that occurs over in the northwest is going to happen as well as further east as we go and for the, I'm sorry, further west. To answer your one question, back in the late eighties, early nineties, we had explosive growth where I was working before in Orange County. They did pass a very comprehensive impact fee ordinance and they did districts as, like that, but the money had to only be spent within those new districts. But our focus has been for facilities on the law enforcement side in our discussions. And we talked about fire apparatus. Everything since twenty-one has gone up significantly. And they can also be used to now offset not just facilities, but equipment and other capital expenditures as well. And that's how we, we use them effectively in Orange County years and years ago is when we would outfit a new deputy, for example, the whole cost of that would be borne by the fees. Now, and of course, you know, in, in three years, they've collected about two million dollars, that's not going to pay for much of facility. So, and part of the consideration as we go to the future on how much is collected, we can take a look at what else, also we want to include for those impact fees. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Adam, did you want to just address the timing?
Timing, timing of the payment of the impact fee is at the time of permit issuance, when we're collecting the permit fees, or the impact fee has to be paid typically then. But our ordinance does say, and no case will be paid any later than the issuance of the CO. And so, that, there could be a potential for a payment plan to be worked out. There's some language in the ordinance that allows for that, but those are considered to be one-offs. The time to pay is at the time of the permit issuance.
Thank you, sir.
Is that, is that normally a contractual agreement between builder and customer?
Ordinarily, and, and we understand that that's most
Can't, you can't enforce anything on that contract except the permit fee, right? So, that would be a decision between the customer and the
We, we understand most lenders now work in permit fees and impact fees.
Are they putting them into as well?
They put them in, and so, you know, bad side, you're financing them. But it's, it's, it's something that's just part of the cost of, of building now.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the big, I'm sorry, the big ones that build on speculation like D.R. Horton and those, they just pay them at the time they pull, right?
Yeah, they do.
There's not a
Any other final questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we will move to our land management update presentation. Fresh back from vacation, good to see you, sir.
More tired, more tired now than that usually means a good vacation, right? Well, thank you, I'm glad to be here and I'm also glad to be here on behalf of land management and have my staff here. You guys want to stand up and just wave? But just wanted to give you a quick update on what we've been up to the last year. It's kind of my first year here. And also, just give you an idea of some of the things we do. Land management does a bunch of different things. Some of them get captured very well, some of the ones are a little bit more difficult to, to capture. But just want to give you an update and a little bit of background, so. So, Flagler County Land Management, we're responsible for managing about twelve thousand acres of conservation lands that have been acquired through the ESL program or that have been transferred and delegated to us by St. John's or the, the state of Florida. So, that includes seventeen parks and preserves and five FCT or Florida Community Trust sites. We're also responsible for administering the ESL program. And as you know, right now, we have about twenty million dollars that we are working really hard to try to, to spend for conservation lands in the county, in the, in the county. And we're also managing to go for Torres recipient sites. So, land management has, like I said, a whole lot of different things that we do. These are essentially the main eight focal areas of our group. We do a lot of planning, so creating management plans, figuring out what we're going to do next year, how we're going to do it. And that includes, you know, monitoring for invasive species, controlling invasive species, doing prescribed fire, doing a lot of maintenance and security seems to be something that continues to come up all the time is as we buy land, need to keep an eye on those properties because people want to go and have fun on county land without proper permission. Do a lot of outreach and education. We do environmentally sensitive lands. We also do forestry and timber management. Some of that is a revenue generating activity, but always with ecological restoration in mind. And then we do a lot of monitoring and reporting on all of those activities, yes.
While you're on this one, is
Is invasive species also inclusive of hog populations?
Yes.
Okay. Not just plants, but also invasive animals?
Plants and animals, so, yes, it, it falls under that category.
Gotcha.
Though it got its own slide because we've been doing a really good job on that, so.
Very good.
So, my staff, we have Shane Overstreet, who started with the county in last year, actually, yeah, last year, Ralph Rich, who started with us in twenty twenty-three, and Ronnie Mitchell. I am privileged to work with these guys. They're some of the hardest working people in the county. And I think some of the, some of the slides here are going to show how hard the work that we actually do is, but also the amount of dedication that it takes for us to be able to accomplish what we need to accomplish. So, this is sort of an overview of our staffing, four full-time employees. You know, a lot of new faces in this program. I think Ralph is the senior person, has been here since twenty twenty-two. But here are some of the skills that everybody brings to the table. And one of the things you'll notice is we have a good amount of overlap, so we all can do a little bit of everything. And that's always a very good thing to have in a team. So, prescribed fire, this is one of the ones that gets a lot of attention and is often one of the most misunderstood programs that we have. But it, it involves a lot of planning efforts and it's required. It's required to increase biological diversity, maintain the ecosystem value of our properties for aesthetics and also for safety. As we all remember, the nineteen ninety-eight fires, reducing fuel, fuel loads in our properties is a very important part of maintaining that safety. So, there is a lot of planning that goes into it. Sometimes you have to plan days ahead and then the fire, fire weather is not there the day of the fire or the day before or the day after. And everything goes to the, it goes to the side. So, you've done all the work and it doesn't end up showing up in a number. And that's what good fire should look like. Yeah, it's a little bit of fire. So, in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, we burned, we did nine prescribed burns and total four hundred and eleven acres. So, that accounted for about twenty percent of our staff time. And we also assisted on ten prescribed burns with some of our partners. So, that's all an opportunity for us to build those relationships as well as get training for our staff. And they in turn often come out and help us burn because four, four guys burning or five guys burning can be a little bit challenging on some of our properties. So, the more resources we have available to us, the better. And I do want to say that, you know, we did have, we did add a contract, contract burner to, to the program. And because of their work and their assistance, we burned about three hundred acres in the summer of this year. So, that, that got us, that gave us a very good bump. So, invasive species management, I'm starting with plants, but you know, I'm a little bit biased with plants, I'm sorry. But this year, we treated two hundred and eighty-five acres. And what that involves, I will show you in a couple of slides. It involves walking a lot with a chainsaw and some spray, chemical spray and just hacking and cutting, whether it's Brazilian pepper or Chinese tallow or one of the other species. You can see right here, here's Ronnie Mitchell looking at this huge Brazilian pepper tree at, I think this was Graham Swamp, that's been there for a while. We had to girdle that with a chainsaw and then come in and spray it. And I think it's dead now, right? I think it's dead.
What kind of tree is that?
But that's the other part, this, this methods are never a hundred percent. So, you always have to treat and then you got to go back again and kind of find the ones that you missed or the ones that the herbicide did not kill.
And what kind of tree?
Brazilian, Brazilian pepper.
Oh, it's big, huh?
Yeah, that's a big one.
That's the biggest one I've ever seen. They're usually just little plants.
Yeah, I've, I've seen, I've seen bigger than those in South Florida, but that is, that was really big for up here.
Yeah. Brazilian pepper.
Yep, yep. So, you know, just like I was saying, you walk, you hand pull, you cut things, you spray the herbicide, sometimes it's in a swamp, sometimes it's, you know, a mess like what you see there, Ralph, standing in, it's just hard to walk through all the dead Brazilian pepper, you're already killed. But you got to go back and treat that little, that little green sprout that's down there. You got to go back and re-treat it and it's even harder sometimes than, than the initial work. And this is what it looks like. This is multiple days at Hawk Creek. So, sort of like that's the Russell Landing on the very left on the west side. And that's all of our guys walking. And so, we walk with the GPS unit that's taking, tracking your path so we know what we've hit or what we've missed. And so, that's several days. And one of those days, we almost all just crowded out of there. You know, we're always soaking wet and full of sweat and it was a hundred and seven degrees. It felt like a hundred and seven degrees, so.
I'm looking, yeah, was this in the middle of the summer?
Yes, it was. And so, that's one of the, that's one of the difficult things is there are, there are species that we can only treat during certain times of the year. And so, we would love to be treating things right now, we are. Brazilian pepper is a perfect candidate, but then there's things like Chinese tallow that you have to go in the spring after they're kind of coming back, coming back and re-sprouting for us to have successful treatment. So, it's, it's, yeah, we don't, we don't, unfortunately, the summer is not, we don't get to stay indoors.
That map is absolutely fascinating.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
God bless you guys.
Where, where is that in, in the county? Graham Swamp, did you say that's Graham Swamp?
This is Hawk, Hawk Creek.
Hawk Creek.
Hawk Creek, that's right.
Oh, Hawk Creek, I'm sorry, okay.
So
What's the difference of the colors?
It's just different people.
Oh, it's just people walking around there?
Yeah, just people walking around. Each one of those dots is probably about, you know, five seconds apart, so. And when you see a lot of dots together, that means that we found a lot of exotics and spent a lot of time in that area.
I can tell you where the patches are, see it now.
Yes, you can. The other thing is, you know, we have this grid that's five acres. So, each one of those little squares is five acres. And so, what we try to do is systematically go and get one after the other and make sure that we're knocking them out in that, in a systematic way so we know what we've actually treated and we can track it that way. So, this is kind of what a before and after looks like before treatment, just a lot of Brazilian pepper on the left. And then when you come back one or two years now, you have all the native species kind of coming in and the mangroves. And it is really very rewarding work just to be able to see the difference. And, you know, Betty Stephlick is one of those places we spent a lot of time in. And it used to be that you walked in there and almost everything you saw was a Brazilian pepper.
Yeah.
And you go back in there now and you have to look for the Brazilian pepper. There's still some, but we're, we're making a good, good progress on that property. As a matter of fact, we're going to be going back out there on Wednesday with a group of volunteers and tackling another area. So, it's not only a good opportunity for us to treat the exotics, but it's also a good environmental education and community engagement opportunity. So, invasive wildlife, so here it is. Here are the hogs and we know what they can do and it looks like a bulldozer went through the property. It's really ecologically damaging as well as very negative to develop lands, whether it's a residential development, commercial development or parks. You know, we do not, we do not necessarily, the, the point, the program is not geared towards removing hogs from private property, but us undertaking their removal from our properties will relieve a lot of the pressure on the adjacent residential neighborhoods. So, we've seen positive results from that and positive results from the community. One of the things we did is we've partnered up with, with the IT department to put together the feral hog dashboard, which is kind of allowing us to kind of keep track where are things happening, where are people seeing them? And then that allows us to position the traps in the best locations. So, that's all Ronnie Mitchell, by the way, he just is doing a great job with that. He actually brought in this pig break system, which is a large, a large net and he can explain better than me, but it's a large net and you kind of condition the pigs to come in and eat. And then eventually, when you set it, they come in and then they get locked in there and then they're taken care of. We'll leave that there. So, but, you know, this year, we captured four hundred and twelve. And one of the positive, very positive things that we could see is you want that number to start going down and it is actually starting to go in, to go down because of the excellent results that we're getting. So, about, you know, the majority of the, the animals have been captured in Beulah Creek and Graham Swamp. So, a lot of the places where, where you hear the, the complaints from our citizens being concerned about pig activity and damage, that's really one of those major areas that we're, we're targeting, so.
Are complaints down? Are you monitoring complaints?
We are and in general, we have seen them. I think the dashboard has been pretty quiet, Ronnie?
Yeah.
So, one over the last three months.
Congratulations.
I haven't seen any of them on, they used to see them on Colbert all the time.
Littered on ninety-five every day
On ninety-five?
This past several weeks with their babies. How far? And I was wondering if they're like breaking a fence barrier, particularly up by Matanzas.
Up at Matanzas, so we have a property out there, Blue Parcel. And I don't think we had trapped there before and we started trapping this year because that's actually one of the really bad pictures of hog damage. And I think we captured how many? Like thirty-nine or forty?
Yeah, they're daily on the side of the interstate in that area.
Yeah.
Right before you get off at Matanzas Woods.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I was wondering when someone hits those.
Yeah.
Whose fence did they barricade through that needed to be?
Broke out of jail.
Yeah, I mean, and that's a lot of the problems that, that, you know, are in our discussions, a lot of the problems that we're seeing is as properties get developed, these animals are getting kind of squeezed into smaller and smaller areas. And so, they're losing their habitat and moving on to the next best thing, which could be somebody's yard, so. So, we also do monitoring and reporting and this is like one of the nicer things we get to do. We get to go out and we do, you know, plant inventories and, you know, Ralph Rich, you know, discovered the striped newt in one of our properties in Princess Place and
What is it called?
A striped newt. And it is an amphibian that is considered to be an imperial species in the state. It's very rare. Well, Flagler County, right, you want to pipe in? Flagler County has the third largest population in the state, I would say, of breeding pond, number of breeding ponds, ponds in the state. So, that's, that's all Ralph's hard work and, you know. Yeah, in the world, yes, but they're only here. They don't count, okay. So, but, you know, we also, in, in all those efforts that we've done of going out to our properties, which they kind of double up, right? When we're out there doing a survey for plants and writing down anything we see, we're also looking for exotics and we're also trying to figure out where, where do we have other problems that we need to do something about? But we've found thirteen new species for the county in the last year. So, species that were not known to be here, we've gone undocumented that, hey, these are, these are in some of our preserves, so. Pretty flowers and big trees, so that's, that's what we, I mean, this is really what we're trying to protect. This is the point of everything we do. So, site maintenance and security, we make it a point to get out to all, all our properties. So, site maintenance and security, we make it a point to get out to all, all our properties, often at least, you know, every two weeks. We do all kinds of different things when it comes to that. We do fence repairs. We've removed a couple of homeless encampments from Graham Swamp, and one from Betty Stephlick. We've, you know, put up new signage on properties that we've acquired, replaced signage in some of the other ones. That includes the signage that we put up on, actually, pretty much almost all of our properties to prevent palmetto berry harvesting. And so, has been a problem in past years. We put a lot this year. I don't think we got any complaints. So, maybe the signs, maybe not a great year for berries. Who knows? But, but we'll continue to do those, keep that going. So, outreach and education, I think this is a big part of, a big part of our jobs, is trying to educate the public into why it is important to do what it is that we do, and why, honestly, why this county is one of the best places to live in Florida. I think we have some really remarkable natural areas. And I think, you know, pushing, letting people know about those resources is a very important part of our job. So, we participated in 23 events and interacted maybe with about 485 members of the public. But here is a list of some of the things that we did. It seems like this year coming up is going to be even more busy. We had, we had a plant walk last week at Princess Place Preserve, and we had 20 people show up. So, that was a great place. That was a great start to our season, so hopefully, we'll, we'll continue that moving forward. Then we have environmentally sensitive lands. I think you guys see this one fairly often. But last year, we received six new ESL applications that were processed. We did 11 LAC meetings, and we done a couple of other things to improve the process and try to move forward with the spending of those 20 millions that we have. So, I think we closed on Marlow, but that, that doesn't count for last year, counts for this year. But that, that was done. We got a contract on Peterson, and we completed the purchase of three creeks preserved, so that radiant property. And, you know, I have to say that, super thankful for Adam's help and all that, because I would not have been able to do all that. He was integral part, I think, a lot of this success in ESL in the last year. It's all, it all goes back to Adam. So, Adam, thank you. And that's all I have. Any, any questions?
Great presentation. Anybody?
On your three-year, on the three-year contract, I know we're new into this, it's not even been a year yet, with North Florida Land Trust. Will you be coming to us just to talk about that one particular contract?
We can.
Are things going smoothly with them?
They're going fairly well. They've been a really good resource when it comes to, so, so far, they've, they're helping us with Peterson and trying to get the access easement from Rayonier. They're helping us with a couple of the conservation easements for the, with the Cowherd family, a couple of those acquisitions. So, they, they've been really good at facilitating a lot of different things that would have fallen to me, which really has allowed me to concentrate a little bit more on the land management side of things and getting, you know, getting the program in a, in, in, in the shape that it's in right now. So.
I just remember that contract being a one-year, that you could end it at one year if we don't want to move forward.
Correct.
So, I, I think it's something you, maybe you could report if you don't want to physically stand up and report, but give us some feedback annually so that we know if that was, if you want them again.
Absolutely. I can do.
Let us see what you, what they were able to do for you.
Absolutely. I think we are, their contract was awarded in June, and I think they really, really started in July. So, around that timeframe, I'll come back to you all, and that you know what we have.
Great. Good job.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you guys for all that sweaty work.
They do, they do most of it.
You're amazing. You're, you're, for such a small group, you're, you're doing a huge job, and you're keeping Florida, Florida, and the best parts of it, and getting rid of the, you know, the visitors that have come and left us, all these wonderful things to have to clean up. So, really does mean a lot to all of us, I think, on this board, because it's, it's not easy. I, I appreciate you, so I want you to know that. You're, you're one of my favorite groups now. Keep Florida, Florida. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Just a couple of things. One of the best additional courses, right, continuing education through ICG and FAC, was a visit to Tall Timbers, and we did up in Tallahassee, outside Tallahassee. Actually, did prescribed fires. Each of us got the opportunity to, to set the fire and, and work and watch different areas and different stages of the regrowth, which I don't know if you get to a point here where you could get the commission out to see some of those stages. And it was, it was a really good experience. And.
We can.
Yeah. If anybody else is interested, I think it was, it was really educational, but also entertaining in a way. But you're right, the conditions have to be perfect to get that accomplished, and.
It may be short notice.
Yeah, right.
But we, we can, we can definitely make it happen, so.
And kudos to the Walk in the Park. I think those are, are great extensions as well to the public. Very good.
Yeah, that's Ralph. Ralph, Ralph is very, very good at that. I think he really enjoys it, but he's also very, very good at it, so.
And I, a slide that I, I think deserves to be up here is the spreadsheet of what we have, and what you guys have accomplished, but through commission approval, is the past 12 months of preservation purchases and easements. A lot has been, I don't know that everybody understands the enormity of what's been done in the past 12 months versus past years, but it's, it's been a big jump. It would be another one of your graphs where it goes way high compared to years past.
Well, and going through, back through the records, I think the last big purchase was that gin development transaction, what's called Pelisser Flats. And I think that was 2013. And I think the next purchase was Kelly Tract in 2024. So, there was, there was a 10-year period there where there was not a whole lot of acquisition.
And it's been great working with you on trying to get some flood plains preserved, so thank you for your efforts and your help.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else?
I think that slide you're talking about.
I think the slide you're talking about would be a Christmas present. I don't think you could give us a better gift than that.
I know I went back and did the math and pulled them together myself, but it's a, it is pretty impressive. So, thank you to the team and to the commissioners up here for required us.
I was going to say that everything that we do, we touch every department. So, you know, with IT, the feral hog, that couple of weeks ago, we had them go out to Malacombra and fly the drone for us to find Brazilian pepper, because walking through that thick palmetto is very difficult. So, if you have the drone, you can fly it low enough and take photographs. We can go back, analyze that on GIS, and drop a dot, and then we know where we need to go. We don't need to, you know, walk like crazy like that. That was easier walking. But, you know, finance, getting all those contracts in place, administration having their support is also important, and you all, because you are the ones that ultimately enable us to do the job that we're doing.
Any update on Marineland? That's still the joint effort with our other agencies.
The, the joint effort is moving forward. We're waiting for FDEP to finalize, choose their appraisers, so that we can piggyback on that. And that's kind of like the next step that we're waiting on.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, the team. Open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public? Yes, sir.
Raymond Royer, Painters Hill. Yeah, I started walking two years ago, a mile. This past year, up to two miles. So, I, I use all the parks for the, for the county on the east side of 95. I enjoy the parks. They're beautiful. These guys do a good job. Excellent job, put it that way. Not a good job, excellent job. And, yeah, they're very enjoyable. It's something the county has as a pearl in the county. So, yeah, good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Ms. Petito, there was one item, other items to discuss on other items.
Thank you, sir. Just one item. The city of Palm Coast was requesting assistance from Flagler County on their legislative appropriation request. It was part of the joint program that we had put together with them. The request was for building a municipal animal shelter. Representative Greco's office had contacted city staff for them to start the necessary paperwork that's required whenever we have these type of appropriations. City and county staff, along with animal stakeholders, have been meeting for several months to discuss shelter alternatives. Our next task force meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at 3:00. We have a joint workshop between the city and the county, which is planned for December 10th at 2:00 PM. City staff have identified two potential sites along US 1. Both of those sites are owned by the city of Palm Coast. When we look at the appropriation, the city is pledging the land and is asking the county to come to the table to dedicate $500,000 to match what they're asking the state for, which is an additional $500,000. The paperwork was due to Representative Greco's office last Friday. We were able to delay it until today, which would provide us time to discuss this matter. It's outside of my authority. But city staff is prepared to submit the paperwork today. They were looking for the county's commitment to be able to submit the forms. If the project was approved at the state level, this would be pledged today, but it'll be coming out of next year's budget. So, I just wanted to bring that up for discussion with the board.
So, the budget discussions, we'll be getting into, typically, December, January, we would be including that in those budget discussions.
Correct, as a placeholder until we determine whether or not the state actually approves the appropriation.
Okay, very good. Comments?
I'm in favor of that. Thrilled.
Pardon me?
I'm thrilled, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hanson says thumbs up.
Would it come out of capital improvements, or it would just be a dedicated millage?
It wouldn't be a dedicated millage. It would just be a dollar amount pledged to the city as a joint, would probably be a joint.
And you just find it wherever you can?
Typically, it comes from general revenues, not our ad valorem. Our ad valorem is pledged for county operating and constitutional. So, it would just come from general revenue. It's just knowing if that's the board's desire. It would be one of those priorities when we start the budget development to earmark it for that purpose.
All right, and you have consensus.
Okay, I'll let them know so they can submit.
Thanks for pursuing that, too. We appreciate that. Very concerned about that. Thank you.
So, they had a piece, last I heard, that there was a county piece of land next to a city piece of land. They didn't need our land to make it happen?
As part of the task force, we evaluated three properties. One was the joint co-location of our property with their property. And then there were two other properties that were strictly just city. The one that we own that's connected or joined to theirs, when they, when we went through the evaluation process, what we found was you're dealing with more wetlands, which would naturally drive the cost of the project.
Right.
So, they identified two properties that they own. One is the south side of their current public works area, which is just north of the waste station, as a potential option for the city to consider. The other property was what they referred to as Track 17, which is also on US 1, a little bit further north.
Great.
So, city staff will be presenting.
High and dry?
Both of them do not have the same challenges with regard to wetlands, but those two potential properties will be discussed when we have that joint workshop between the two boards. So, it was really just today, the commitment for that 500, so we can submit the, the joint appropriation forms.
Thank you. Anything else? Just that one item?
Just that one, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Rodriguez, did you have anything for us? Okay, all right, just checking. Thank you. At this time, we'll go to our last public comment. If there's anything, anybody from the public that wishes to address the commission, now's your time. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Any comments on today?
It was warm until, it was nice and warm until about, no, about 15 to 20 minutes ago.
The air conditioner came on, you mean?
And there's snow on my eyelashes now, so we're, we definitely need a ready to recess.
All right, well, thank you.
We'll be adjourned.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you very much. We'll see everybody back here at 5:00. Coming back.